6:05 PM on Wednesday, January 17th, 2024. And I was calling the meeting of the John Germaine Trustee to order. I just want to begin by welcoming our two new trustees, Lisa and Megan. And I know they're well prepared because they just spent an hour with Kelly, who taught them everything they need to know. So they're good to go. And it's going to help them tremendously. And welcome back, everybody. And welcome back, Kelly. Thank you all for conceding that the table together.
I'm going to go up to office for Lisa and Megan. So we wanted to hand one of those down to Megan and one to Lisa. And then if you ladies want to read that out loud, I state your name.
Lisa Presapano. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Trustee of the John Germaine Memorial Library according to the best of my ability.
Perfect. Megan.
I'm Megan Prench Schmidt. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Trustee of the John Germaine Memorial Library according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can you take one and pass it down?
So I have a secret handshake.
Not when it's reported.
Where are those filed? And the other, since we are an association library?
They are filed in a code.
And I just handed to Dan to pass around the ethics statements. So if you can all take a minute to read that, sign it, and then hand it back to me. Yes. Thank you. As soon as you have them. Send them my way.
Very public expression. Hi, public. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Nope.
Okay, so you're all public.
Hopefully, we have an exciting year. Not too exciting. Not too exciting. Good excitement. Good excitement.
Okay, number five. Approval of board meeting scheduled for 2024.
I'm assuming those two assets mean those two months are out of the sort of regular.
Yes. So I went with February 28th, which is the week after the board meeting is supposed to be because that falls during the February break on the school calendar. And then in June, our meeting is supposed to be June 19th. But June 19th is Juneteenth, and it is a holiday. We are closed. So I went back to the second week. And basically, those dates were chosen so that there is the longest amount of time closest to a month between the meetings. So, for example, June 12th is was picked because there are actually five weeks in the month of June. So I think it's Wednesday. So basically, you're not going to have a meeting and then a few weeks have a meeting later.
Five weeks in the month of May.
Yes. Yeah.
So are you going to be able to get the financials ready by June 12th?
Yes. June 12th, we can do. Yeah.
Can we get a motion to approve the board meeting schedule for 2024?
I'll make the motion to approve the board meeting schedule for 2024.
All we have here. Okay, unanimously approved. All righty. The annual budget vote trustee election. I guess you want to talk about that, Kelly.
So if we stick with our traditional day, it would be Thursday, September 26th. I reached out to Mary, the district clerk at St. Herbert School, and she asked if we could put a pin in this until February because the school needs the Bosse's calendar to do their calendar. And they don't have the Bosse's calendar yet. So we're going to put a pin in it until February.
So do you have a motion to approve?
Oh, we're going to skip it.
Table it?
Yeah.
Okay. Table it because we don't have it. Sorry. Okay. All righty. We have approval of minutes from both December 11th, the work session minutes, and December 19th, regular meeting minutes. And a motion to approve. We could do them together, right?
We can, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Make some motions to approve.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
I agree.
Motion passed unanimously. Okay. Report from the friends of the library.
The friends are on vacation. No, no, no. So we have friends. They're just on vacation. They will be back in March. Until then, no report.
Okay. Elliot, treasurer's report, please.
Okay. All right. If you turn to page seven. There are a lot of numbers here this time around because this is actually essentially an annual report as well as a December report. I still tried to keep it as brief as I could, but I wanted to give enough big picture information to be useful to you in thinking about the way we do things. We ended December 2023 and fiscal year in a very good place. So we're starting the new year with more than $1 million, actually $1,256,175 in our active working bank accounts, savings and money market and checking. So that's a cushion which is certainly adequate to cover quite a few months of operation, maybe four, something like that. And we will, of course, shortly be receiving tax levy money, at which point that cushion is it's still there, but we won't need it as much. The other nice thing about where we stand is that we now have more than $3.5 million, 3559345, in investments. This is really wonderful because that's an amount that's greater than our annual budget. And the note that I made here is I think these are excellent ratios for a nonprofit organization. Four months of operating in bank for operating capital. We have more than an annual budget's worth of money invested. So that's a very stable situation. Of course, we're going to spend a lot of money this year. So the numbers may not look quite as beautifully balanced or quite as nice ratio next fall. But still, it's a good place to be. What I've done here is in the first chart is I compared where we stand now with cash and investments in '23 with where we were a year ago and two years ago. Of course, the first thing you notice is that the balance has shifted pretty dramatically in the sense that we have far more in investments as a percentage of our total holdings than we did then. That's a very good thing. Other than that, there isn't too much that I can comment about this. I mean, obviously, our money's going up. Like I mentioned, it's going to go down, but very good placement. Mortgage balance is down now to under $5,473,787. It was well over $5 million a year ago. And remind everybody that the mortgage is paid off in about six years and change in '29, December 30th of '29. Now, in part two, we're going to look at activity for December of '23. But I don't want to spend too much time on it. There were really no surprises. Expenses were actually lower than the previous December. And while income was lower for the month, that's mainly because we had the big Wagner gift, if you remember, in December of '22. And that skewed the numbers. I mean, it was a much bigger December than we would normally have. So the fact that we came out a little bit less strongly on net than we did a year ago is not troublesome in any way. It's fine. Now, part three is where it gets interesting in terms of both where we stand and also the year-to-year comparisons. I put this here. I mean, I could have put it even in more positive terms. Technically, one could say that we came out on budget because we were within 1%. And most people would consider that. I am saying that we did technically, you could say, go over the budget by about $300,000. But that's less than we would have expected to because we approved spending like a half a million dollars on the glow up. So I think that it's an excellent result. Now, we still have a few glow up expenses to go.
We do.
You know, but nothing too serious. So basically, we got through that and still came out with, as I say, less than $300,000 outside of the budget. Now, if you look at the two previous years, the revenue line has been going up very dramatically, as you see. Expense line has been going up too, of course. As a matter of fact, the expense line went up pretty dramatically between '22 and '23. So the fact that we are at minus $297 this year and we were at plus $204, which is a $500,000 swing, is still not that bad of a situation. And if you look at it in relation to '21, I think it looks good. Any questions so far on the gross numbers? Because I wanted to look at a few specific areas. Just any questions on the gross numbers? Okay. Now, what I did here, I didn't want to get into like individual small budget lines. What I tried to do was look at the main areas of expense to see how they're changing and see how we did. Now, contribution income, we are a little down from last year. But again, that's almost completely due to the Wagner gift, which was such an unusually large gift for us that it skews things. We were lower than we were in '21. So maybe we could talk to you better.
So it did. So 2021 was basically Kathy didn't hurt the appeal, but designated everything to Wagner. And then in 2022, there was some of that still coming in. But also, Jeanette Sertuzi Wagner passed away, and all the donations that were made in her name also went to the Wagner.
Yeah. Yeah. So anyway, I think it's a respectable amount of contributed income. If you look at the 4,500 line, which is financial income, of course, this is the one where there's been the most dramatic change over the years. We went from having only about $8,000 in financial income in '21 to $175,229 this year. And one of the nicest things about that number is that this number is not going to change real. I mean, it will go down a little bit to the extent that we spent a big chunk of money this year. But hopefully, we can keep most of the money that's invested invested. Therefore, this will be a continuing gift that keeps on giving for the library as time goes by. So I think the institution of the T-bill accounts and investing some of this money in a more productive manner is going to make a big difference in the long run in the way we operate. If you're the kind of person that's into ratios, it's interesting to see that we made almost as much in financial income as we spent on program expense. It's just an interesting ratio, something to think about. Okay. Let's look at the program expense. We all have been talking about the fact that it's going up. Actually, when I analyzed it, it didn't look like it was going up by as much as I expected it would be, from around $150,000 in '21 to around $180,000 this past year. But it's certainly up. And that's a good thing in terms of the health of the library and our programs that we offer to the public. Personnel expense, I mean, everybody knows that this is the biggest area that any organization, commercial or nonprofit, is facing these days because this includes, obviously, salaries, benefits, and so forth. Now, you see, we've gone from 1,251,156 in '21 all the way up to 1,691,615 in this past year in personnel. So it's a big jump. But again, the fact that we are absorbing it relatively well in the gross numbers is good.
More staff, more benefits.
More staff, more benefits. And so just to also keep in mind, and this is related, but it's not. We hired an additional person that I had not budgeted for. But then we had people leave, so that kind of bought. But the other part is I had not budgeted for the coverage of health insurance to be 100%. So there is that in there that is a big increase. And then also, I believe, was this the year we went up to 10% into retirement for all staff? So I mean, retirement, let's be completely clear. That is like the least expensive thing we can do to give our employees the most benefit of their budget. But the reason that is so dramatic is really the robust benefits for them.
Yeah. In 2021, we were, I think, down two staff movements every year. So that's two salaries.
Yeah.
So if we're closer to fully staffed, we were fully staffed, we're expensive again.
Yeah.
But that's okay.
Yeah. That's what we should be.
That's fully staffed. Yes, we know. Our staff is our greatest resource, right? So, yeah.
And you know, one of the other numbers that you can look at in terms of how management is operating here, administrative expenses, 7,000 line. I mean, it's very nice to see that that number is actually down this year from last year. You know? And it's not, this one is not getting out of hand. Now, I don't know what all the pieces are. You go back in and analyze it. But I think that just in gross numbers, that's a very helpless situation that our administrative expenses actually went down this year compared to last. I think that's.
Was there some big purchase in '22 that needed?
I don't have a chart. Count them.
If you want to look at that, that would be on pages.
It's on page 18.
18.
It's the bottom number.
Yeah, you can look at some of the numbers that play into it.
The big thing this usually is, is this where the electric bill comes in?
Well, of course, we have. But they're.
You know what it is? Is we moved away from having IT consulting to an IT person in the building. So that's a little bit of a savings, a cost. Our audit is more expensive than we had budgeted for. So that sort of. But yeah, and we, you know, we haven't been in any needle hot water. So our costs in terms of, you know, I don't have to call Mr. Bowles all that often.
Yeah. Obviously, the one area that we talked about all year last year was the B&amp;G, especially with all the expenses that we didn't anticipate for HVAC. And then, of course, the glow up. Now, I've taken the glow up out of this number. I didn't take it out above when I was telling you about the total expenses. But here I did because I don't think it's fair to compare our B&amp;G expenses for ordinary operations to include the glow up. I did leave in all the HVAC upgrade, and that is unusual. Those were anomaly expenses. And so again, I think that certainly explains why we were significantly higher in B&amp;G this year than we were last. And I think that the scope of it is it's realistic given how much money was spent on HVAC remediation this year.
Well, and I think actually HVAC remediation has been a budget item since the HVAC we put in. So when we get the new one, the repairs and the remediation.
Yeah, we actually created that HVAC remediation line to deal with the, to sort of track what we're spending on, like when we have the wells done, when we have the Zardos, you know, do his thing. So that's, we're sort of considering all of this part of that project. Or if something breaks as a direct result of us running, you know, muddy water through our machines, for lack of a better description.
So next year, or a year after we get the HVAC system, the electric bill should come down.
Should come down a little bit, yeah.
That will pay for your energy. Yeah, that, well, I mean, that's the $72,000.
Yeah, I was hoping maybe somewhere like '25 or '26 we could not be worried as much about extraordinary expenses. But then who knows? Something else could go wrong.
Don't worry, I've got a couple other projects in the pipeline once we get through the HVAC.
All righty. Just to breeze through the rest of this, part four pushes your bills and applied payments. Those pages, 20 through 30. I didn't see anything of concern there. Everything looked very straightforward. The warrant this month was, for December, was $64,703.29 for those checks as they are listed and shown there. And as I say, you know, there are things yet to come, which you can look for, you won't find. There are a few more things on the glow up. Some of the furniture, I think, is still to come. What else?
We're waiting on furniture. We're waiting on a little bit more signage and some other things for the children's room. But it's just like, it's piecemeal stuff, right? So we're just waiting for really stuff to come in. And then, of course, you know, as we live in our spaces, it's like, oh, we didn't think about blah, 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 right? So one of the things we didn't think about was bookends in the YA area, right? So we just ordered, you know, in case you're wondering, we needed 110 bookends for that YA area. There are 110 shelves, which I was like, really? Because I was going to order like 30. And then Liz was like, well, I was going to tell you 30 was too many. And then I was like, well, joke's on us because there's 110 shelves and they only bookends. So things like that.
Yeah. Okay. And I would say that, you know, it isn't just the glow up. The glow up is probably the biggest single thing. There's going to be some minor adjustments in these gross numbers that I'm giving you. And obviously, this is not going to be the same. It will appear, this '23 will appear somewhat differently in the annual report when Al gets around to doing it. But I do think that this, I tried to summarize this in a way that largely clarifies what's happening. And I do think it's positive. Okay, so let's go on to the payroll details. Very typical, we're down by one staff, right?
Yeah.
So we were down a little bit on these two payrolls, each for 18 employees. They've traditionally recently been more like 19. So they're a little bit lower, 42.340 and 42.345. But it all looked good to me. Everything seemed accurate. So I would just ask for you to consider those various pieces.
Thank you.
We do. So we do sunshine, the sunshine committee. Don't worry, the check's in here. It's going to be fruit tarts this month. So what we do is for staff merriment, developments, togetherness, staff happiness is, we have staff happiness. We, morale. I was going to get to that word eventually. I just had to say all the others first. We do dessert to celebrate birthdays once a month. We do it on the, it's usually the second Thursday, but it's going to be the third Thursday this month. And Dorothy bakes us something delicious. And we sing if the people whose birthdays it is like to be sung at or to. We don't sing if they don't like to be sung at or to, depending upon your feelings about singing happy birthday. And it's just, it's, you know, it's a nice way to just sort of, you know, make everybody feel special.
Cake is a nice string.
Dorothy does the best.
She sells it.
She does. Don't worry. If you have any questions about anything on the menu, we have tried all of it, right? We've tried it all. I feel like the staff favorite is the fresh fruit tart. That's a popular one. We usually like, her chocolate cream pie is very good. Her lemon squares are good. The key lime, we've done the key lime. The key lime is good. She does those cookies, though. What are they? The all.
Pumpkin cookie?
Yeah. I'll get back to you. Maybe we should start celebrating birthdays. Every month, yes. That is our standard. And we got in with a standing order before she blew up and, you know. Now she's always fucked, which is great because her staff is young.
I move to approve the financial report.
And then all of them on a process. Yeah.
Good job, Elliot.
Yes, thanks.
So if you flip all the way, page 43. Let's see. As apropos of our conversations at the last board meeting, I just want to let you know additional signage and wayfinding has arrived and has been installed in the library. If you were following us on social media, we got a lot of really positive feedback about our signs, lots of likes and hearts and thumbs ups and whatever else, you know.
I found it very helpful. We were here to get books a couple days ago.
Yeah.
That like the letter of the author's name is sticking out.
Sticking out, yeah.
You know, if you go to look for an author.
Yeah.
The New York Times list is posted. Now we could discuss that in our last board meeting. So it's really, it's very user friendly.
And was it Monday? Maybe Monday or Tuesday, our giant new book letters arrived. And we love them so much. We bought giant letters, which are currently being fabricated for the children's room that say, "Read, Play, Grow" in orange, blue, and green, which we'll put on the tops of the bookshelves, though. And then I did order another set of letters just in case we need more words. You know, if I can say it in two words, I'm going to say it in 10, right? We also ordered "Dream, Think, and Create." So, you know, we'll either, we'll see if three words is enough or if we want to do six or maybe, you know, depending upon. Yeah, we'll rotate. We'll see, you know, something is. But. Live, laugh, love. Yeah, it's the library version of live, laugh, love. Read, flavor. So we've signage. And we also updated the little wayfinding signs that are on the glass in front of the stairwells that sort of say like, this is here. And then the one in the elevator that you can read while you traverse your way up. Just as always, the staff is excellent. It was tricky through the holidays. It always is. No matter how many times I'm like, everybody, just don't take vacation during Christmas and New Year's. That's just the time to do it, right? And then the New Year's Eve event was very well attended. Families had a really great time. There was dancing and popcorn and cotton candy and merriment. London and I have been working on getting the library ready for the annual audit and things squared away for the new fiscal year, including all the things I listed there. Al is coming tomorrow to start pulling files and finding, you know, the exactly one invoice I didn't attach a package slip to, which, you know, he finds very quickly and easily. It's terrifying how good he is at that, just by chance. I met with John McColey earlier last week to discuss the HVAC projects and some of the vendors he thought might be interested. We're talking about putting out an RSP and sort of letting the people apply bid on like general contracting or like the whole project or like general contracting or just the HVAC, just because perhaps some of the, some of the HVAC guys don't really want to be involved with general contracting and the general contracting don't maybe want to be involved with the HVAC. So it's just going to give us a couple of more options.
What's the general contracting portion?
You know, the stuff like the grading, because there's grading, the cement work, those general. Um, those general things. Um, so, um. And then sometimes, you know, like, because the grading, it's not super tricky, but it is. There's a lot of stuff there and it's, it's on a slant and we are recessing it a little bit. It's just, you know. We're trying to give ourselves as many options to find the right people to work on the project. Um, I did reach back out to Patrick at Lizardos and I'm waiting to hear back from him. Uh, as a result of that December eleventh work session, it was my understanding. That the board wanted the sound attenuation panels in conjunction with the landscaping. So I asked him to redraw, uh, with specs for the, uh, sound panel. So we'll have the HVAC equipment, the sound panels, and the landscaping. The current drawings just have landscaping and the equipment. Does that make sense? Perfect. Um, I also reached out to our friends at, uh, ACSR Controls. Um, to just put them on notice that as part of this project. We might use it as a really good time to update our VMS system, which are our controls. Ours is very much outdated, um, so if we're gonna have new things, we should have all the new things. Um, and they said, sure, we're super excited, and that's great. Um. We had a leaky toilet, it is no longer leaking. You're right. Um, it was a gasket of one kind or another. Um, and let's see, uh, I finally got the name of an alternate handicap door repair vendor. Our guys, I can't get a hold of them. And then when I reached out to some of the other people I know who use them. They were like, we can't get a hold of them either. So, um, we'll, I'll be reaching out and hopefully we'll get that button fixed outside. It's like my button of shame every time I walk by it, like. Um, and then also, I just wanted to mention that, knock on wood, we made it through the, um, store, the storm. With like, no issues, no building issue. Uh, which is, correct, great. We also passed our fire inspection and our annual backflow testing. Which I know is super exciting. And one thing I did wanna mention, which I didn't include in my report, was that, um. Uh, Liz invited the sixth graders from the school to come down the hill. And she did a whole tour of the library building with them, the new team space, told them about all the different programs. Had some of the cool library things set up, she also had, um. You know, the Nintendo Switch set up to be like, look, we can play games in the library. And so that was really, the kids were really excited and jazzed. They came as a walking field. Uh, they did not, um, stop by my office to hear me explain the brass crack, but, um, I will forgive them this one time. This, um, they have heard of. And so in terms of statistics. Um, things are, things are pretty good. Um, I did want to mention, like, visitors are up, which is great. Um, items added to the collection, I did wanna say is sort of back down to normal. In November, you'll notice it was like five hundred and five, that's a bit of an anomaly, we don't generally add that many items. But that was part of the glow up project, included updating and putting additional books in the children's room. So that was sort of some of those books coming in and getting processed. Um. Passive program, so what passive programs are, are things like our, um, spice of the month club. So somebody takes it, um, and then also our, um. Uh, teen subscription boxes, so if somebody comes in and takes something, uh, that's considered a passive program. Um, spice of the month is just, people love that. Um, and the teens do love these subscription boxes. And, you know, circulation is. I mean, it's, it's up compared to the previous year, but it's down compared to November, but it was the holiday, it's the holidays.
Now, November was also the, just after the library opened.
Yeah, yeah. So what I always think is interesting is, um. A, a telling number is this total physical circulation includes renewals. And as you know, the library system, the RILS automatically means books. And so whenever that is sort of up, I always think like, oh, that's people who need more time to read their books, so that's why they're not in the door. Um, again, children's program attendance has been crazy good, uh, YA program was, attendance is, is up. Um, adult program, where we have a lot of people in the building, which is great, a lot of website visits, which is great. And, um, our social media is doing pretty well.
I have a question. So since you've eliminated the, uh, the seating computers. Have you had the same sort of usage with the laptops?
Uh, I think we have, we have usage, um, we have a lot, like, if somebody's just coming in and doing something, they'll use. We have the one desktop computer, which is set up for, um, accessibility, we sort of, we call it the accessibility station. We're, we're down a little bit, but I don't think that's necessarily related to the fact that we, people are using laptops. Um, versus us having desktops up, I think it's just.
It's been going down for a while.
It has.
I was just worried it was really gonna take a dive.
Do you have the people who come in to watch movies on the computer? Cause that used to be, you used to see people up on the third floor watching.
Yes, so I would say.
On a laptop, I would think.
I would say, I would say some of those individuals are no longer with us. Um, either, um, in person or, you know, in spirit, uh, so. There's that, which is probably sort of a little bit of that too. Uh, you know, we do have. Um, some people who used to be in the library all day, every day. Um, who we don't see as often, which is sometimes the case when the weather gets a little bit colder. And or, um, you know, if, if there's housing insecurity issues, sometimes we'll, you know, have patrons who we. Presume, I don't wanna, you know, say that, say that they are, they're not, but all signs point to maybe they're, they're housing insecure. Or they're at the library because they're, they're, they don't have another place to be. And those tend to be a little more transient, where we'll see them for, you know, a group, you know, like three months or six months. And then they'll disappear for a little bit and then we'll see them again. So.
So that's not as problem?
But.
That's not as.
I mean, it's, it's not, I mean, we definitely, you know, we, we have a library where, um, we do have people who come in and they're here all day. Um, and then, and oftentimes when that's the case, sometimes we will see those people for a short period of time. And they'll disappear for a little while and then they'll come back and, you know, it's just the nature of library service. So. And then the personnel report is, is in there. Um, I did wanna mention, in case you were wondering, like, what, what are we doing here with things being bolded and things not being bolded? Uh, the bolded ones are full-time positions. And then I also gave you with the employee list, um, whether they are a professional, a paraprofessional, or just staff. Um, uh, professionals are designated professionals because they have a master's of library. And information science, uh, library trainee, we do have one employee that's designated as that. That is what you call somebody who's in primary school. So. Um, just as a reminder, uh, we do, Mira is still, uh, in California for a little bit. And coming back is our summer clerk, CJ, who is gonna be here on Sundays. To assist at CIRK and do some, some shelving and some other stuff. Uh, we were hoping to, that she would be able to come back once she got sort of school square away and felt comfortable. Um, and so she'll be here on Sundays.
Who's, um, carrying the program forward now that Mira is not here?
Um, the, the, um, Liz.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, they, they work together, the, uh, Esther Newberg. Social justice, so Liz has, has taken that over for the couple of months until. You do have to vote on the personnel report.
Make a motion to approve the personnel reports?
Awesome.
Um, fall in favor? Personnel report approved. Okay, committee reports. Personnel need?
No, personnel did not.
Finance company?
No, we did not.
Buildings and brands?
No, but I need to, we need to set up a meeting in the near future.
Yes.
Okay.
We do, because I just got a quote for lighting fixture, replaced, replacing all the lighting fixtures. Because they're broken and we can't get, or when they break, we can't get parts for them, so we need to, sooner rather than later.
Play policy and long range planning.
We need, but we want to meet very soon.
Yeah, gotta set that up.
We gotta get that.
Before we leave tonight, if the groups can get, get their calendars out after the meeting. Or tomorrow, I will email all of the committee chairs. Um, I wanna set up meetings before the February meeting.
Yes. Okay, I'd love to set up the long range planning before the end.
Perfect.
Outrage, outreach and public relations. Mash part, yes, we have less Wednesday evening. I'm still waiting. Uh, to hear from CPF. Uh, the renovation of Field Four was completed, but awaiting seating in the spring. And the board, our board will have an annual meeting, it's an annual meeting, May twenty twenty-four. And the committees that were formed several months ago seem to be effective. Committees are meeting and doing what they're supposed to be doing. And that's it for the card. Well, that's good to tell, okay. Um, ad hoc one for the box.
And an iPhone.
Right. And then there's ad hoc scholarship, and this said, probably she seems to have lost the ball.
So, so the scholarship committee was, uh, Diane and Bill, uh, but I think we're looking. For a couple of people to volunteer, too.
Yeah. Okay, don't all jump at the opportunity.
If you don't volunteer, you'll get voluntold.
I'll do it.
Okay, thank you, Elliot. Alrighty. Okay, um. Full business.
So HVAC update, uh, as we discussed, I'm waiting on paperwork back, updated plans from Lizardos. And then once we have those, then we have our list of people and we have our RP, we can move forward. I am gonna read out to our. Not expediter.
Call her an expediter.
I'm gonna call her an expediter, uh, the expediter, um, just to see, um. What, what the vibe is, since we have a, we are without a.
We had ordered in the last meeting, they were starting to bring up permits.
Yes, yes.
Is that what you're gonna do with the expediter?
Yes, but we need the additional, I need the updated drawings first, right? Because, um, we wanna make sure everything's corrected in there. Um, and then I just sort of wanna get. The vibe on what's going on in Village Hall, all with regards to, I know. Chris left and, um, uh, Ryan, Brian?
Brian.
Is, is doing the job of two people, so that's that. I do too, yeah, cause I feel like we're, we're, we're just doing everything to begin with. So I feel more comfortable waiting to have the sound panels and spec and ready that in there. Um, and that's really it.
I have one question, uh, what is Al's timetable, like, what does he expect to be? Yeah, what, do we have a timetable on?
I'll ask him tomorrow, uh, you know, he usually works as quickly as he can to get as much done as he can. Before tax season.
Yeah.
And then there's that like little break during tax season, and then once he's out of water, he'll come back to us.
Yeah.
And a lot of that is how quickly wanted I get stuff to have.
Yeah, but I mean, certainly gonna be earlier than it was last year.
And it's also less work, yeah, I was just gonna say, less work than it was last year.
Yeah.
Um. Speaking of which, can we move on to the Wagner?
Yeah, get it.
Okay, so, uh, something that Anne had asked at the last meeting, uh, when you look at the, uh, statement, the financial statements. The Wagner says we only have like sixteen thousand dollars, that it was something like that. And so I was like, well, that's not great. And I ran a couple of reports and quickbooks and I talked to Al. And I looked at our audit for twenty twenty-one and we found the problem. So in twenty twenty-one, the previous auditors, basically what they did is that money was. A donation that came in as a contribution to Wagner. And then money went out to Wagner, and whatever was left over was dumped into our general fund. So it was like, it, it was like a donation for the year, then goes to the general fund. That is not what was the intent of that money. I was new, this idea was new, none of us caught it. So I went through and I pulled all of the Wagner donations for twenty twenty-one. And then I subtracted all of the Wagner expenses for twenty twenty-one. And the amount totaling fifty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. Is going to be designated, uh, not designated, is going to be restricted. Not designated, restricted, um, to Wagner on our financial statements that we get from Al. For twenty twenty-three. And so a resolution doesn't need to be passed. It just needs to be memorialized in the minutes that the board recognizes that. The money was not shown in the best way it could possibly have been shown in twenty twenty-one. We found it at the end of twenty twenty-three and we are correcting it on the financial. That makes sense?
Yeah.
Perfect. Um, so, and that amount of money plus the amount of money that's already in there. Will endow us for the next. Eight years, nine years, um.
Is that all salary?
No, so what it is, is it's to pay the instructor.
Right.
It also pays for, uh, snacks. It pays for, um, when we, if we do the reception, uh, food at the reception. Um, any sort of, if we give out a small gift or we do a, um, bound work of the, means work, any of those things.
Are we still under utilizing what has been committed?
Yes, but we're, um, I spoke to Liz about that the other day and we have, we have a plan. So, um, to sort of.
Expand services?
Yes, to, 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 to reenliven Wagner. Um, you know, one of the things that's just not necessarily working is the Zoom. Um, because the instructors, I mean, people like a three D instructor, not a flat, you know, not black family, so, um. So we're, we've historically, with the exception of last summer. Given Wagner a respite during the summer, so we're going to do that again this summer. And then we're going to look to reinvigorate it with an in-person instructor come the fall.
Are there other programs of, of the library, association libraries, impulsive libraries, team writing programs that we might. Those models we might follow that are successful?
Where are the most successful? I would say, yeah, um, at least now here. You know, I think part of the problem.
Talking about out here.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, here's the thing, and this was one of the things we sort of, Liz and I, I discussed, is when this program started. Like, things were a lot different than they are now, right? So the kids were a lot less scheduled, maybe, if you will, than they are now, right? And so right now, where the program is having a little trouble is finding its place among, um. The kids who, who are, who are in the program and their sports activities and their after. The age range is, um, seven through twelve. One of the things we wanna do is pull in those sixth graders because our, our teen department is six through twelve. Um, the other part of that is, um, some of the. Constructive criticism that we have gotten from anybody who has wanted to join the program. Is that they feel like, because the kids who have been in the program for so long. Who are sort of aging out of it at this point, have been in it so long and have worked with this particular instructor for so long. Have been in it so long and have worked with this particular instructor for so long. They just felt like it's a little clicky in a private club and they didn't feel like they, like, so what we're really looking to do is to. Sort of. Re.
Relaunch?
Whatever. Thank you. Relaunch. Um.
Is there a way to separate that stage a little bit more? What eleventh grader is writing about, a seventh grader is writing about is very different. I don't. You know what I mean?
I, yeah, but it's, it's, it's sort of, I mean, it's sort of. Has always worked and sometimes like the older kids are not. Like the older kids sort of self-select them their way out before the younger kids. So we're really looking at, you know, what is the best way to do this? Do we create like a feeder program for tweens, right? So like we're getting those fourth through, through, you know, sixth or fourth and fifth kids ready. To go in when it's time to go into Wagner team writing. So we're looking at a theater program. We're looking at, you know, we do firmly believe that the Zoom is not working. Um, and I think, you know, we, we've had to, the instructor has had to cancel a lot. Um, which makes it hard and then kids' schedules change with sports change, so they're constantly like meeting when it's good for them. But that doesn't help us bring in other kids. So we're, we're gonna let it. Come to an end and then we're going to have the summer off, which is something that we've always traditionally done. And then we're gonna bring it back, uh, in the fall. And I think that, you know, a re. A relaunch is really what we need and, you know, like many things. Covid helped nothing, right? Like it really sort of. Um, changed the way that, that we do things and how people do things and, you know, virtual programs which were once. You know, like great for teens during covid, like they don't wanna do Zoom anymore, like they wanna be in person. And we see that.
So we're in the program.
How many kids are in the program? Uh, what do we, we probably have six or seven right now?
I think it ranges on when someone can attend. I think it can even sometimes be lonely.
Yeah.
So my, my question is, so you're saying, well, your premise was that we have one of the better programs, more successful programs. And we're acknowledging at the same time that our program is not particularly.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that's a bad commentary on people who, if, if we're at the top and we're struggling. Where is, you know, so, and librarians, this has to be discussed. So what is, and what's out there? There's gotta be some program, some methodologies.
When you talk about programming and you talk, especially with teen programming, right? Like when, when you have the best use of your library by teens in terms of attending programming and things of that nature. It's really that six through nine, like that's when you, you've really got them. It's, once they get older, you see them in here studying, you see them in here picking up books, they're not necessarily going to library programming. And a lot of what that's related to is all of the. Stuff, um, you have to do to get into college nowadays, right? So like you have to play sports, you have to, you know, volunteer, you have to cure cancer, you have to, and so there's. The, the amount of time that you have, the older you get in high school, the less time you have to do fun things. And so I think, you know, one of the other things we discussed is I don't think we're hitting maybe necessarily. The right audience, right? Um, you know, so we need to find like. A way to reach the kids who are not the sports kids, right? Who are not necessarily the after-school club kids and have them say like, oh, like the library, that's a cool place to hang out. Let's, let's go do that.
Makerspace.
Yeah. What?
Makerspace.
Makerspace. Yeah, so that's, that's on our, our, our project as well, right? So we started doing more after-hours programs, which includes some of our makerspace stuff. We're doing more. Um, you know, we're adding more things to the library of things. We just finished installing all the equipment we need. So now we have a podcast studio. Um, so we're just, we're trying to get things sort of up and running and ready and so. Where's.
The team writing program kind of morphed into like the podcast, making that be part of?
No.
No, I, I mean, the team writing, I mean Sage did it for. Seventh grade through.
Yeah.
Tenth grade and loved it. It was a really important part. Their group was big maxed out at seven, maybe eight kids. I think the most kids that have ever been in team writing. Been twelve.
My guess of population here is probably the numbers not a bad number.
I don't think it's a bad number at all.
Good number.
And it's, and they're committed.
And that's, and that's the thing, right? Like this is not like, uh, it's not a. It's like a come in and, and, and. Break a computer with a hammer, right? Like it's not that kind of STEM program, which was something we had that was really popular, uh, last week. When the kids were cracking open computers. Um, it was fun. Uh, but, um. It's, 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 uh, I don't wanna say it's an intense program, but it's a commitment.
Well, yeah, and. I mean, I think, I think you are hitting the kids who, you know, don't do sports, but. They have to have a way to get to the library and get home. So you're not gonna get the kids who are helping taking care of people at home. Or who have to take the bus home because that's the only way they are going to get home. So those kids are already, they're not gonna come to the library because we don't have a school bus.
So we sort of felt like we almost need to, cuz we even floated the idea of like. Like right now it's meeting at a later time because of sports. And I was like, you know, I don't know if that's necessarily, like, you really, that's not necessarily great because. You know, we wanna create a situation where a parent doesn't have to like drop off their kid and pick them up an hour and a half, like, right? Like that's, that's annoying.
So instead of getting the kids to come to the mountain, why doesn't the mountain come there? Or whatever it is, you know, if, if the kids are in school. You know, is there a way that?
The kids walk here after school.
Yeah, that, that, that's not the, the problem isn't getting here. The problem is getting home, which would be the same problem if they did an after-school thing. This is school bus.
Has already.
Yeah.
Right.
So, so the goal is sort of to like find that sweet spot where like, where. After-school programs, the kids can come down the hill, we can feed them a snack. And then the parents only have to pick them up once, right? Like as a parent, I only wanna pick my kid up once. I don't wanna have to drop them off and pick them up, right? So, um, that was sort of the feeling is like, so we're, the, the long and short of it is. We're discussing lots of different things. The goal is for a relaunch. Ten kids for this type of writing program is a good group because it is a, it is, it is, it's a lot. It's a big commitment.
And for what it gives those ten kids, I mean, it gives those ten kids a training in writing that. You're not getting in school. And you shouldn't be getting it in schools because this is kind of a. It's also for niche kids. It's kids who are gonna enjoy writing and love writing and it's creative writing and it's.
Yeah.
So that kind of, you know, this is not.
This is not that.
This is, this is, well, and this is not, it's not recess. It's not like everybody's gonna want it. It's, it, it's.
Certain kids. And, and not all the kids, like not, and that's the other thing, like not all of our programs. Is for, are for everyone, right? Like, um.
A chess, a chess club is not.
Yeah, chess club is not bringing in necessarily the same kids who are coming for when we have cookie decorating, right? Or maybe they are.
I, I know, but we have a tremendous amount of money, you know, desire to do so.
Yeah.
So if, you know, we wave a magic wand, how many kids would you think? Would ideally be served in, in a writing program?
I mean, here's the thing, it's also, if it becomes a writing program with thirty kids, it loses something, right?
So let's say the number is ten.
But I mean, like, if we could get ten kids, that would be.
Whatever it is.
Be the max.
But, but I mean, what are we gonna give these, these kids, you know, and that?
Well, I mean, we're in seven or eight, so we're, we're close to our, to kind of where we wanna be topping.
And like, and so like some of the other things, right? Like when we used to have it, those kids always ate pizza. Now the kids are like, I love, like, you know what I mean? They're like, we just, we, we want a vegetable tray. Like it's not even that, or like, I just want a juice box and some chips.
So, so you have these kids, we have, I don't know, a million dollars, right? Seven kids. We're never gonna get to that. So what do we, how do we ramp up what we're giving them?
I think, I mean, I honestly think, you know, having something where. Towards the end where you get, because what they used to do is they used to read, the kids would read their things and to. Make a special invitation to fourth and fifth graders to the, or have, or even see if the kids could read. You know, could get permission to go. And read to the fourth, the fourth and fifth graders in school and say, this is what we did at the writing.
Yeah, but that's, that's, that's nice, but it's, I'm talking, well, that's what I'm saying. Get something published here. Get a writing, and take them on a, a nice trip.
So, well, we can't take them home.
We've done a lot of money.
So, one of the things that. There's, there's a couple of other things that, again, I don't wanna say that covid killed them, but covid amongst other things killed them. The kids right now. Have been working on novels, right? Not short stories, not poetry, not. And so this has been like a multi-year project. And so our goal, when Andrew was here, is we would get the kids' works and we were actually going to publish them, right? We can publish them. Like that's the goal, but we can't do that when we only have. Like a chapter of a novel, right? Like because we're like, well, I don't wanna do that. And so, um, that, that's, that's always the goal is like to have their work banned, which comes at an expense.
Yeah.
Um, but again, we have to sort of look at what it is that we're doing and maybe it's time to like. Put the years of novel writing, you know, let that go on and start something new.
That wasn't.
Yeah, I can understand.
Well, I also.
Stories, obviously. Have a publication every year.
Yeah.
You know, but a bound publication, you know, not like a little staple type of thing, something that they have something that they can show that they can utilize in their own. College transcripts so that they don't always have.
If you want, if you wanna, if you wanna go out of the box with it, I mean, you could even consider paying.
No.
No, I, I.
I understand, I understand.
Conceptually, if you, if you have a program that's offered to a, a, an audience, a public school audience. And say we have this program at the library and if you qualify for it, if you have the, the desire to, to get there and do this thing. That you would get some kind of stipend and that then it would be tied into the potential for publication. It would make it a more desirable thing to do.
Or expand the type of writing, not just poetry, maybe make it playwriting.
Yeah. Well, and I, and so, so that's, that's part of the, the thing, right? Like that's part of us looking to, and I don't wanna get too deep in the weeds with this, right? Because this is sort of like a, a, a. A conversation, you know, I, I want to have with Liz and, you know, cuz she's, she's, she, she's the one making the connections with the teens, right? She's the one who's there day to day. Um, but I think that, you know. Where we're at now is, is we recognize that we need a relaunch. And we're going to do that. And in relaunching it, we won't be spending more money than we have for the last, you know, so many.
Possibly to, you know, have some of the teen programming and children's programming, kind of. Launching kids, moving kids towards it.
That's what, when I said we should do a theater program.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I don't know if it would work with how Wagner is supposed to be run, but. Because you take a break over the summer, all these colleges offer pre-college programs in the summer, often in creative writing. Maybe like there could be a little scholarship for, you know, a couple of the kids to attend this program. And they continue their writing through the summer and they get a little pre-call, I mean, that's.
They don't have to do it here. They can do it somewhere, we can sponsor them and say.
Ella went to Smith for creative writing for two weeks last summer and it was amazing, like, you know, and it can be closer. It could be like, maybe there was a relationship with a school that.
Whatever, yeah.
You know, or something. Because those are, those are attractive programs. Especially for kids looking at colleges too. They put it on their college application and, and, you know, these men's, you know.
Then you do it as a group or not, or whatever, you know, but, you know, but, you know, it's just.
Those things cost.
We have money here.
Uh, don't, did you not hear Ellen's report? I like to spend your money. Don't grab.
You know, look at the number or something like.
Yeah, no, but, but, you know, well, we'll get, it's.
But one thing about, do you wanna know one thing about the Wagner money? Is Janice not giving more to just the teen program, but she is getting, but there is the money that will come from her today.
Well, it's, it's the whole thing is that they, it's there for the taking.
Yeah.
It's that we just have to ask and as long as we give a.
Well, we have to have something concrete.
We have to have something concrete to do and, you know, I just feel like.
I would, I mean, personally, I would love to see. Kind of the instructor not be the same person for six years because. One thing. Well, I mean, Tyler in the beginning, uh, this was his gig. And this is so much a side gig for him now that it, you know, it's a completely. He's evolved into a different instructor.
Thank you, thank you for saying that because, um. I was not gonna say that in a public meeting that's recorded on our website, but, but that is also something that we very much recognize.
He, I mean, he was phenomenal in the beginning when this, when he was working, he was working here and at the bookstore.
But where, where the problem lies, and we recognize this, is. We can only have him on Zoom because he is in the city and Zoom is not working. Which means I think as much as Tyler loves this little side gig and as much as we love Tyler. We need to recognize that this is not what's in the best interest, but we also recognize that the kids who have been working with Tyler, this last cohort, they're all. Aging out, right? And so, and they love him and we don't want to.
So we can have guest lectures.
Yeah, and pay for guest lectures. The opportunity to, like, you mentioned, like, for example, writing for theater, writing for film or whatever. You can, there's no reason you can't bring in a new instructor in a specialized area.
That might energize the kids.
That might be better in programming as opposed to, I mean, when Sage first started, they. They did poetry for, you know, September and then in October they did something and then November they did novels and then December they did short stories. And they, you know, it's like each month there was a different, now Sage also had some. Lots of instructors doing it. So it's, it's tricky to find the right person. And so that's why when they found Tyler, it was.
So, so again, we're, we're, we recognize where we're sort of failing. Um, and we are brainstorming what our plan is for the relaunch. In the fall after the summer, we just have the spring to get through, right? So like we just have March, April, May, and then we're done, right? So. So we're, we're, we're gonna relaunch and so those, those are sort of the things, right? We've just.
Who is directing this from the libraries list side?
From the list, yes. So, so when we. Pay an instructor to do a program. It is sort of the, the, the instructor is there to facilitate the program, right? Like, so it's, it's not the, the responsibility of staff member to sit in that program and stare at them all day, right? Like we pay the instructor to facilitate it. Um, but again, and this is part of the problem with being on Zoom, it's really hard for the instructor to. To instruct and command the room, if you will, be when they're two D. Um, so Liz does have to pop in a little bit more than, you know.
Oh, no, I just wanna, you know, moving forward, you know, ramp this up.
Yeah. It's a team program, so it falls under the review of our team leader.
J P used to attend the entire meeting, but part of it was.
No, we need this ramped up. This, this has got, this is, this, what we're doing is gotta be. Discarded and we've gotta just, we've just gotta go.
And that's, that's, it's, we're evolving. So, but we can't take these kids who are graduating out of the program and say like.
You have to have something different.
You know, like you can't throw the baby out the bathwater quite yet.
Well, and it's also the wrong time of year to bring in a whole new.
Yeah, but then it's, we're gonna always be stuck in that.
No, 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 we're, we're, we're.
Gotta.
It's down, down before we can go back up.
But hopefully you can discuss all these, a lot of these ideas that we talked about with Liz.
Yeah.
And, you know, eventually, you know, then she'll come back to you with some proposals.
I mean, we've, we've been, we've, we were talking about it by the best the other day.
I've been talking about this for decades almost. This is like underserved.
Yeah.
Part of the community.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, before, most of us had, you know, children or whatever, so this goes back a long, long.
No, it's, that's Wagner team.
Right? I mean, so.
Could there be like.
Let's go, we got the resources.
Local authors, you know, like I'm thinking of a friend of mine who just wrote a novel where maybe for three months. Local authors, you know, like I'm thinking of a friend of mine who just wrote a novel where maybe for three months it's. That author who's a local author and then. Three months later, it's somebody who writes mysteries.
You know, our, our feeling was, and that was again, something that we, we were discussing internally, is that. We need to focus less on these law, multi-year projects, which I think my. You know, my guess is this became a multi-year project because we have the same kids and we're doing this by Zoom and. You know, it's just easier. It's, it's, it's a side gig, it's side gig instead of a whole gig.
And her specialty is novels.
Yeah, and so. So that was, that was one of the things we were discussing. It's like not every type of writing is for every kid. And so. We sort of wanna say, you know, like bring somebody in and do like, you know. Short stor- yes, short stories and yes, poetry and yes, but also like nonfiction writing. Or graphic novels or memoir writing or. And so, so that's one of the things that, you know, we, we discussed doing, but, you know, we have to. End the season, if you will, um, because we have to end the season and then. Get ready for, for the fall.
Yeah, it's what a, what a problem to have.
What a problem to have.
Do a teen program. Alrighty, new business.
So under new business, uh, it is our annual review of our long-range goals and objectives. Um, you can look at it, it's the same one you've seen for years and years. It's a nice starting point for our strategic plan. But it is certainly not the strategic plan we, we aspire to. Um, so. Um, I did wanna mention where I think that we really did well this year. Is on expanding our library without walls with offsite programming. And expansion of our library things, our library things really ramped up. We've also been doing a lot of programming, uh, in the streets. Uh, where we've popped up with the park, we've been, um. Is it North Haven at the school? So we have a little tween book club that meets at the North Haven Schoolhouse. Um, which just started up. We've also popped up at the beaches. We've done a lot of popping up. Here we are. Pay attention to us. Um, and then of course with the, uh. Activist mindset of collecting hyper local content, we've really brought in a lot of, um. Uh, uh, personal collections of photos. And, and videos and things of that nature. And of course, we have the bar, Case Barnes donation, which is gonna help us digitize all of that. Um, I think that we have been responsible stewards of the library's fiscal resources, thanks to all of our T-mails. And then, um, you know, we, we have been doing a better job of. Recruiting and hiring staff. I would like to see a little more diversity, uh, among our staff members. But we've definitely, um, put together competitive salaries and benefits and. Issues for professional development and, and innovation. I think we have more staff members going to conferences now than we ever have before. To the point where I'm like, slow down, you two need to be in the building every once in a while. Um, but we have really great staff engagement in things like Nyla and, uh, SCLA. Um, have, for instance, some archival professional development things. So the staff is really doing a lot of professional development, which is nice. So, that's our review.
What is our current, uh, goal in terms of how often we redo this?
It's supposed to be annual.
We're supposed to review it annually?
You know, but I mean.
You know.
Renew it.
We do it, well, it depends. If we've got a three-year plan and a five-year plan.
Yeah.
At least every three years because. Um, but it's.
But this is eighteen, twenty eighteen.
So this is six years.
Yeah.
Um, and, but honestly, I think long-range planning should be an annual thing. To revise because. Goals shift. If you wait three years, you're gonna miss something that you didn't, you didn't know existed.
Yeah.
One of the things we did when I was at Bridge Hampton, we had our long-range plan and it was sort of. Before the most recent ones that I did before I walked out the door, which I really, really liked. It's a four-page plan, um, which I just thought. Was, I really liked that. I still really like it. But when we had done our traditional. Long-range plan when I first got there, we sort of had a where we were, where we are. And where we want to be. And every year at the annual reorganization meeting, we would look at it and I would provide an updated plan and I would say. These have been accomplished, these haven't, we've changed our minds on these. And so it really was sort of a living document where. That everybody could sort of see pretty clearly that, you know, I think one of the things was going like non-Dewey in the children's room. And as soon as. That library left, I was like, that sounds, um, and we all agreed because.
Well, that's realistic.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you need more than that.
So, um, so that's sort of. Where we're at. And I would, I will have this discussion at long-range plan, whether we wanna do a three or a five-year. A three-year just, you know, means by the time we get done with our first one, we have to start all over again. But that being said, I think it's, things are moving so quickly in terms of technology and library use and library service. And what the issues are in libraries, that to do anything more than a three-year plan is gonna be outdated.
So when do we make that determination?
Uh, well.
It's gonna be part of.
It's gonna be part of the long-range plan.
Make a recommendation whether we want one.
Yeah, the long-range plan. When we meet this month, we will have, we will start mapping out.
Trustee training. So think about and come back to me at the next meeting. Um, you all are required to do trustee training every year annually. Um, and so we had Kevin Burmacy from System come out and just do a basic overview of things. Last year, we can certainly have Kevin come out again. We can have somebody else come out and talk to us about something else. Um, think about what you might like to do trustee training in, if you wanna do it in person as a group, or if you want to. Do it on your own and go to like, they do a like trustee handbook book club. You could attend those sessions. There are some canned video stuff I can send you, which, you know, if you wanna do that, you can, um. Or, you know, think about what it is that you want to do, what it is that you're interested in, what could be beneficial to the library. And we'll figure it out in February.
Do you have recommendations?
Not yet. Um. But, you know, I think. I mean, it's, the, the bar is so low. I think you have to do two hours every year.
Kevin was very good. But you know, but you may have some ideas.
Yeah.
What.
And Kevin can certainly come out and talk again about the roles and responsibilities of a trustee, or he could come out. And, you know, talk about, sometimes he'll come out and talk about library finances, if you want him to do that. Um, or, you know, if there's something else you guys are like, you know, I think we really need to talk about. Yeah.
There's no reason we can't have Kevin for.
Sure.
One-hour session, two-hour session and then do somebody else.
Can we make a decision tonight whether we prefer to have somebody in person or do it online?
I think so. I would, I would, no, I, I would be personally.
Who would like to have a in-person presentation to meet the requirements?
Yeah.
Okay.
I personally, I don't have the, the time. I'd rather have a sit two hours in home and watch a video, but I mean, I'll do it.
And that's okay, cause I think you, I, we all have to meet this. Training requirement, but I don't think we all have to meet it the same way.
Exactly.
This is continuing education. You get to meet it the best way.
I was gonna raise a, a question like, to what extent does this have to be a group thing? Because, I mean, I know in my, in my working life. Uh, working with peers and other institutions, you know, swapping information, talking to them, you know. Uh, was a major part of, of job, your, your growth on the job, you know? And I mean, I don't know to what extent it's appropriate, but I mean, I, I just would. I mean, like, for example, what would be wrong with, with me, for example, you know, I'm in the trustee treasurer role at the moment. What would be, uh, would, would it not be appropriate for me to. Reach out somehow to, to a trustee, trustee treasurer at another library?
That wouldn't count.
Collegial.
That wouldn't count. No, it has to be from like, uh, uh, uh.
Accredited.
Accredited, accredited, but like library credited. So what would count is, you know, like I said, there is. There's videos you can certainly watch. You could do the trustee handbook, um, book club, which they do. Those are reported. You could just watch the recorded videos. Um, you could also attend a conference or professional development. Nyla has a section that is the library trustees section. They do a lot of programming. Some of it is in person, some of it is online. You could certainly attend that and that would count as trustee training. Um, you could also do.
Is this free? Or is this we paid for? Because let's say. Video conference or something of that nature.
Yeah.
Or to attend and Elliot maybe wants to attend something that is more specific towards the financial.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be free. You can pay for it. There's money in the budget to pay for training. Um, you know, when Kevin comes out, he's free, but like somebody like, um, Vic who came out to talk about strategic planning. You know, he comes with a cost.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, they're.
Just for me, rather than having to take a Monday, if I can sit at eight o'clock while I eat my dinner and watch a video.
Yeah. I mean, one of the things that Shelter Island Library did. Is they would come to the board meeting early if they could. And they would start each minute, each board meeting with a fifteen-minute video and then after six months they had their two hours. Um. I was sort of asking like, what, what are you guys, like, you gotta let me know.
If, if we could see what Nyla offered to trustees. At a conference and trying to get a list, cause a part of the problem is we don't know what we don't know.
True.
So if we got a list of different topics, then we might get.
Here is my follow-up question to all of you. So we are institutional members of Nyla. Um, I do have extra spaces on our roster. I actually have enough. I, as board president, I put you on our roster as a member of Nyla. I can make you all members of Nyla and you get a section and I can put you in the trustee section and you will get emails. A lot of emails. I know you do, but, um, but also if you're a member of that section, you then get the discount for their, their programming.
Yeah.
Which is fine because.
Yeah.
But, uh, the library is gonna pay for our program.
Yeah.
For the program for us to go anywhere. So I, as I think, we could see the list of, and what they talk about, then you would have a better idea.
So when those programs come up, I will send them.
But I do not, um, I, I mean, I, I would, I kind of. If they, if at the last conference, I'm assuming they had a conference program. If we could just see.
Yeah.
Conference program.
That, that makes sense. Cause I can see Dan's point.
Yeah.
Listen, I, personally, I have to do twenty-four hours of continuing legal education. Every year and it's, it's mad and it's.
Yeah, so.
It's impressive.
Is there a timeframe that we have to give this?
By the end of the year.
Yeah, December.
So here's the thing, I will let you know that different libraries do different things. So there are some libraries that, um, have all their trustees come, sit down. Bang it out in a two-hour program. There are some where they give them all of the. The A-list, here are all the videos you can watch. Watch one of those videos and tell me when you've watched it and I will notate that you've watched this video on this day and it has. Has, has fulfilled your thing. If you go to a conference, you can do that. So there's any number of ways you wanna do it. I was just looking for a little, I was number one, reminding you that you're required to do it, but also looking for a little guidance in. How you guys would like to take your mandated.
I like this approach. And to Elliot's point, you know. If we all learn something in depth, you know, that we can share and we're a stronger group for it.
I have no problem watching something and then coming, telling everybody what I've just seen.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, if, if there's a topic that everybody's interested in and it's something that Kevin or somebody else you know. Teach us, then sure, I'll, we can do it in person. But, I, I mean, the way I look at it is, this is continuing education. We're all responsible to fulfill it. For ourselves. This is our job, our responsibility, and Kelly is helping us.
Okay, so I'll put together a list of stuff.
But let me just.
And then once I have conference programs, I'll let you know.
Kevin is really good because he is knowledgeable and he brings local knowledge.
Yes.
So he can speak to specific questions about what the other association libraries or even what the other libraries, you know, non-association libraries are. And that's, I, I find that.
I, I find it helpful, but I've also heard him speak. Three times or four times and we have gone over the same topic again.
Yeah.
Also, which is good, but I've also been here for a long time.
The last meeting with Lieutenant with him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, well, well, I'll, I'll put together, you know.
He moves it along very.
You know, like, he offers two programs. It's that one and then like a finance one, right? And if you've heard them before. You'll hear them again. Um, so.
So.
I, I understand that.
You know, I might pass on Kevin's. Shit because I've seen it to watch a video on something else, but that's my responsibility, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah. So, yeah. So I'll put together a list of, of things.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, and then you guys, I will then put together a little Google spreadsheet and send it out. And when you completed your training, you can. Tell me what it was and sign off on it.
Is there any types of programs that are like emerging issues?
In library for trustees or?
Yeah, for trustee, rather than. Same, certain things that are more.
It depends. I mean, I, so, you know, I would have to look at. You know, it's, I, I will say it's Nyla's sleepy season, right? Cause their conference is in November. And then it's the holidays and now they're, they're gearing up again. Um, so I would, I would look to see what they're offering via webinars, um, and what they offer at their conference. Their conference is in. Sunny Syracuse this year.
When?
November. Um, and so, you know, it's, it's one of those things. I can also send you guys the link to PLA, which is in. Um, sunny Columbus, Ohio in the spring, uh, where everyone wants to go. I'm speaking.
I know, Columbus, Ohio is actually gorgeous. I want your wedding now that we. Around you.
Yeah.
And I'm talking now places like Florida and Ohio and other places can move towards you.
Yeah.
And I think. I would, could I could be prepared for that?
Yes. So I can certainly, you know, what LTA, which has, has put forward. Usually as part of their Nyla conference offerings is they usually do a pre-conference. And then they generally have a lawyer who specializes in libraries. Um, Cole is her name, Cole Adams. And she's, she's like the, uh, you know, like the Tom Poles or the Kevin Siemens of upstate New York. And she talks about issues in libraries and issues that trustees are struggling with. And sometimes that program is a hit. For, you know, things that are going on for us. And sometimes it's a little bit of a mess. So the last time she did that program. She focused a lot on municipal libraries and issues specific to municipal libraries. And it was, it got a little granular to the point where it was not helpful. Or like, if you went to that training, you'll be like, well, that's very interesting. That's very good. This does not apply to me, right? So sort of looking at those, those sorts of things.
Alright.
Alright. And this doesn't count to your trustee training. But technically, and we've never done, we've never done it there, but technically. You all are supposed to complete the New York State Sexual Harassment Prevention Training.
What if you had to do it for work?
Yeah, exactly.
Do it for us. Sorry.
So we did it to work. We did it like on a video with questions.
Oh, it's a video. You'll love it.
Can I just cover it one Monday and just bang it out?
You can also do it from home. Because here's the other thing. Here's the best practice that I was going to, we talked about this. Um, really, library business should be done. With a library email address. And so, um, you're all gonna get library. Dan has the best one. Uh, it's gonna be your first name and your last initial. Ellie, did Ellie give you those sheets? Baggage on your man. Uh, but everybody's gonna get a, a library email. If you feel you need to port it into your own email, have at it, but we're gonna give you trustee emails. And the first thing you'll find in your. And the first thing you'll find in your trustee email inbox is signing up for NOBA board to do your sexual harassment prevention training.
So.
How do we sign in? Sorry.
What are you doing?
I, I'm gonna send you the email, you the instructions because I don't have them.
Yeah.
Um, thanks.
So, so then we'll be updated?
But.
This will be outdated?
Uh, I will, it will be outdated and then I will add all your trustee emails to it.
Okay.
But I will also create, I'll have, and when I say I will create, I will have Ellie create a like board at John Tremaine email, which just automatically emails it to all of you. So you don't have to put in everybody's email address. You can just type board at.
I want the record reflected. I changed my email to a more professional email when I became a board member. I'm quite happy with this one.
Now you're dead.
Now you're dead. But just for those of us who do not want the six-mail account to be watching, um, any chance we could still use our personal emails for sending things like board packets?
You can have your emails forwarded into your personal email if you don't want to monitor the other.
All right.
That will be on you if you want to have it forwarded into. And I will happily do it for you. I will have Ellie do it for you. So if you really want your trustee email to also forward to your personal email, I will have Ellie do that for you.
I mean, she discussed this before in years past. This is like legal ramifications in case anybody.
But you, but you should, that's exactly what it is. You really, all library business should be done with your library email.
Cause otherwise then your personal email would be subject to discovery and subpoena and you have to reveal everything.
My lawyer, Michael Carabina, would not let that happen.
Never. All right. We'd smash your computer.
We're throwing off the.
We're working. I'm making a motion now to go into executive session at seven thirty, seven P.M. Um, to discuss or review an issue in the, um, director's evaluation that the trustee wants to read.
Okay. Um, somebody's gonna second that.
I'll second it. Okay. I like to make the motions to adjourn the view at eight, eleven.
I said it.
Don't rush everyone.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, thank you.